Wednesday, December fifteenth. Supposed to start at six thirty, but with a little overboard beyond. Will you call the, the, Councilor King?
He's present.
I didn't see him. Council Warden?
Present.
Council Baker?
Present.
Council Wheeler?
Here.
Council President Thomas?
Present.
And we will have remarks of the public with agenda items all in one.
Fifty-six fifteen. I'm trying to fathom maybe you can help me there. Now therefore be resolved by the Council of the City of East Cleveland, Ohio, four fifth concurrent. They got three fifth here. So which is four fifth, three fifth? That needs to be corrected.
Is that a fifty-six fifteen?
That's fifty-six fifteen. Now therefore be resolved by the Council of the City of East Cleveland, Ohio, four fifth concurrent. It has three fifth here concurrent. So that needs to be corrected. And also, also section one, that this council hereby approve and accept.
Someone is at the mic and please give them the respect until the person gets finished asking a question.
Okay, and section one, that this council hereby approve and accept the fiscal year twenty fifteen, one-year action plan, having estimate one million, four hundred and thirty-one thousand, one fifty-seven dollars. That should be six, fiscal year of twenty sixteen. So that need to be amended as well. So one of this year exists, twenty fifteen or twenty sixteen, and also four fifth concurrent or three fifth. So that need to be amended as well. Then, um. Now therefore, down at the bottom, therefore be resolved, and also the first, section one, on page one of two. Section one, okay.
What resolution?
That's fifty-six fifteen.
Okay, so we're looking at the resolution at the, on the front page.
On the front page it says, now therefore, skip down to the.
Oh, you're looking at the whole, the body of the rest of the reading back.
I see, I see, I see.
That's one of these pages.
Yeah. You're right. I see it now. Page one of two, right?
Right.
Yeah, okay.
And then the section one, fiscal year of twenty fifteen should be twenty sixteen.
You're right.
You see that?
Yes, good, good.
Okay. Moving through this, again I had quite a few, I guess, questions in reference to that. And you have this twenty sixteen, one-year action plan, that's to that. I'm concerned as to the, why down here you have university circle, this is East Cleveland, and not university circle included in your plan here.
Action plan, sir. Well, yeah, no.
Down on page one, it said.
One of, you still on?
The city of East Cleveland twenty sixteen, one-year action.
You're talking about one, page one of the action plan.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, what paragraph you on?
As a community adjacent to the city.
Okay.
Contingency with the university circle neighborhood, city of Cleveland, whatever.
I have never, my ten years on this council, and even prior to being on this council, I've never seen anything in a plan that we indicated other municipalities in our plan. So what does that have to do with our plan? And I also have some problems in reference to the, the.
Maybe you want down here.
I'm still on page one. And I, well let me just, I felicitate you, whomever proposed the first paragraph here, and I find it a bit, well, anyway, in using available resources to build an economic status and viable community to work to eliminate light conditions and area suffering because of lack of investment to direct available resources to benefit citizens of lower and moderate income. So that is well said, I guess in your, what do you want to call it, your mission statement. It's well said and well written, I'll put it that way. But it is not adhered to. I don't see anything in this mission plan that has been in operation in this city as I stand here today. Because I don't see anything, you have been lower and moderate income and rehabbing, it says about rehabbing and all this stuff. How many houses have been rehabbed in the city? And it's just a lot in this thing you need to go through and check here. I have many trepidations about this thing. I have questioned on the second page, the City of East Cleveland prepared a multi-year consolidated plan that employs a collaborative process that establishes a specific course of action for the residents and commercial revitalization of the City of East Cleveland.
Mr. O'Maze, your time is up. It's went past, I guess, or.
But.
Mr. O'Maze.
Okay, let me just finish my.
Mr. O'Maze, I get.
Could I just finish my sentence, please?
Finish this business.
Jesus. Maybe I'll remove my train of thought. Decent houses and all this stuff, I actually wear a hat.
Well, Mr. O'Maze, I want to say this to you. I do applaud the fact that you are taking the opportunity to go through the action plan and have marked the action plan and have questions about it. That is what residents of this city should be doing as far as when an action plan is being passed by the council. Thank you very much, but your time is up.
Dr. Patricia Bolbyak, eighteen ninety-four firm, and I have some concerns both about the action plan and about next year's budget. And one of the specific things I would like to see line item in next year's budget is funding to fix the traffic lights. We have traffic lights, we have no traffic lights on Superior, on Newwood, on Shaw. I've called the mayor's office and my messages have spoken with the person. But, you know, maybe we can get GE to provide us with some light bulbs. So that we have light bulbs that work in our traffic lights. This is, this is pretty basic. I think it's even more basic than the potholes, which are pretty basic too. The other thing is I would like to agree with Mr. O'Maze on the priority of more money for rehab. I am absolutely disgusted that you're tearing down rehabbable buildings in my neighborhood instead of tearing down the half burned out shelves and, and totally non-fixable buildings in other areas. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bolbyak.
Oh, and I don't know when the time to talk to the senior people is, but I have issues with the senior people in the plan.
Thank you. Moving right along, but I want to take a minute to deal with a specialty, which is to, we're losing one of our councilors. He will not be here next year. So I would like to take this time, even though everybody is taking their time for everything else. Pardon me. Pardon me. You're being rude. You're being rude. Okay. One of our councilpeople is, won't be here next year. And this council has looked at his work and his contribution since he's been here. And we applaud him as going through what you have seen here tonight on an ongoing basis. So I would like to say to, because he has to leave, I would like to say to Mr. Mansell Baker, this proclamation comes from the whole, from the whole council. The City of East Cleveland, the Office of Council, and proclamation of appreciation to Constable Mansell Baker. Where at were we, all of it? Wherein the East Cleveland City Council wishes to recognize Mansell Baker, a gentleman and scholar who has served as Ward Forest Councilman for the City of East Cleveland from twenty twelve to twenty fifteen. Whereas Mansell Baker, who is one of the unique individuals that truly led by example, by his commitment to his higher power, his family and friends and all those people who have come to know him and love him. Now therefore it would be resolved, the East Cleveland City Council, on behalf of the entire city and all the residents, with an overwhelming pride, pay tribute to efforts of Mansell Baker. He is a true role model, whose appreciation, aspiration, accomplishment, and actions are source of family pride and inspiration to his colleagues in the City of East Cleveland community. We wish you great success in all your future endeavors. Thank you for your. Mr. Mansell, a few words?
A few. Just a few. I would like to acknowledge this council and appreciate your support over the years. And also, again, love this community. It's been a great work to me, now finishing my education and pursuing my professor's law certificate, which I'm in the process of doing. So I really appreciate, again, this community. And I love its family nature and its family environment. It has its ups and downs in the years. Its shortcomings of bad leadership. But, you know, but I really think that this community is going to go in the right direction. And I really appreciate, again, this council for its indulgence over the past few years.
Thank you very much.
And I welcome the new incoming councilperson.
Thank you. Does anyone else got anything to add to the compliment?
I need to say something about my colleague Mansell Baker. First of all, he's one of my fraternity brothers, the great fraternity, Kappa Chi Alpha Phi fraternity. And I can recall when he was working in the mayor's office. Focused, intellectual, and brought something dynamic that was not appreciated. Mansell is a sharp young man. He has a lot to offer, we're going to lose his, his abilities and his broad view. I welcome the new councilperson and I wish you the best, my brother. Okay, stay focused, stay sharp.
Well, man.
Sure.
I've been sitting at this end of the table, and Mansell's like a little serious, known always. And I almost want to give him a applause again because he did use just a few words. That's not like him. You always got a lot to say. But one thing, we've not always agreed on things, but one thing that I can't say we've agreed on is the passion that he has with the city. He's a product of the community and he wants to see what's best. And our way of getting him may be different, but we want the same resolution at the end of the day. It's a pleasure working with you.
It's always a pleasure, it's been a pleasure for me because he brought creativity, ingenuity, and all the things that a young man can bring to an organization.
We would like to hear what you're saying as well.
I said, he has brought creativity, ingenuity, and all the things that a young, hot-blooded young man can bring to an organization. And he has made a difference in the City of East Cleveland and also in his ward. I thank him, I appreciate him, and I applaud him. And hopefully, his aspirations come to fruition. All right? Thank you.
I'd also, I'd also appreciate a few words. As a fellow Kappa man, it's been a pleasure being on council with you the last two years. Born and raised in the city, I share your passion for the future and success of the city. I wish you well, and I know the seat, so.
Thank you. Pardon? Okay.
Can we have anything to say?
Oh, I'll sit.
Would you like to say something?
This question, are we still on the march concerning the agenda?
Yes, we are.
Okay, there was a matter of the might to discuss concerning the agenda.
Okay.
And then also.
Well, let me clear him. Let me clear him out first.
Okay, clear that out. Well, I can make a quick remark about Mansell. Mansell, I do appreciate you served also with us in the East Cleveland Collaborative in the beginning of that, looking for ways to keep the city independent, as I know you still support, and most of us support. I believe every elected member of council supports the independence of the city. So thank you for supporting our independence. Hopefully you'll continue to support our independence.
Thank you. Moving right along to the, what is that?
Cause the hell probably won't hear what I wanted to say. Only thing I want to say is that he is very young and intelligent, but. But I say one thing. The city probably be better off if all y'all join and resign.
First of all, first of all, let me say this. First of all, let me say this. I don't find the humor in any color remarks. I really don't. We're here and you want to say something that's valuable and sending him off, that's good. But I do not appreciate the fact that you get up here and belittle someone that of a nature such as an outgoing council. Now I'm giving you the opportunity to say good things or bad things or whatever, and you were, and you said a bad thing. So we appreciate that, you know. But I don't find it funny up here.
Madam Chairman, this is the resident speaker, so they do have the right to speak. But anyway, saying that, have said that, I have known Baker, and I'm saying Baker because it's just like a song or whatever. And I, this isn't the first time that he has received accommodations, et cetera. During his tenure in high school, we honored him. And so, you did bring something to this council, but it's, and I think that could have been more accomplished if we had had a opinion here and a vision to move the city forward. And I think you presented some of those things, but our city is still, is still on dead center. And I hope that in the coming years and in your endeavor, whatever your future endeavors, I wish you success. And as I said before, stay focused and stay with a vision and move ahead. And I think that we will miss you, or whatever. You fly in and fly out, but we will miss you. And I think you did contribute something to this community. And I wish you well in your future endeavors.
Thank you, Mr. O'Maze. You can leave now.
And this is not a term to say about this, this is a government.
Okay, moving right along through the agenda. Where are we at? We are finished. Oh, one person. Okay, one person.
There's a couple which ones I would like to make some on the agenda.
Again, agenda items.
So first thing with respect to the one-year action plan, the fact that the widely disseminated from the lister. And also, just so that, excuse me you all, including Brent. So in addition to the widely disseminating that throughout the lister, it's also once, when, you only have to notify the public when an amendment to that plan is being made in excess of fifty thousand dollars. But I would ask the council to forward to the public all amendments made to that plan, even if they don't meet the statutory requirement, even if they don't cross that fifty thousand dollar threshold, so that people know what's being changed. Some of the line items don't even have fifty thousand dollars in them. So the other thing with respect to order in fifty-nine fifteen, the permanent budget appropriations, one of the issues we've had tonight has been the lack of sound. There was once an appropriation for public access channel to be funded, excuse me, the council funded filming of council meetings, as well as they're running on public access channel. At the moment, the public access channel is black, there's nothing being broadcast, in spite of the fact that we're going through the most significant time in the history of our city, and the people are more limited of information now, whatever. So that I would ask council to have a line item appropriation to cover the filming of council meetings, so that they can be broadcast. Also, because during those times when council meetings were broadcast live and filmed and recorded and broadcast on television subsequently, the room was also wired for sound, five legs of communications. And we wouldn't have any issues with public, members of the public not being able to hear members of council. So thank you very much.
You have all comments and will take this. Moving right along, do you have, what is it, presentation now? Did I miss anything?
Yeah, you missed it.
Remarks of the mayor?
Thank you, Senator. I knew you'd love it. Good evening, everyone. Certainly want to.
Speak up, please.
No. Certainly want to, in his absence, acknowledge the importance of the dear councilman. He's done some things and we certainly appreciate what he has done. I want to congratulate Councilman Tom Wheeler. As board three resident councilman, I had the pleasure of voting against a recall. I was one of the throng of people who voted against that recall, and I'm glad to see that you're still in your council seat, this community elected you want to a four-year term, and reaffirmed that election to a four-year term. We, as a board three resident, I would say we're very, very proud of your service. You know how I feel about you personally. And the city, as a result of that, spent fifteen thousand dollars that was unbudgeted, unprepared, but we spent fifteen thousand dollars simply reaffirmed the election that we had in the first place. So that's a good thing. And I think that in the future, if there's a recall, most recalls turn out in the same office holder retaining the office after the recall as it did before. So just want to keep that in mind as a community. Council, look forward to, as always, working with you. Council has the budget opposed for two thousand sixteen in front of it. We hope that that will, that that will go well. We're ready, willing, and able to answer any questions. We appreciate the input that you have going into this budget. You know, we sat down with several councilmembers and explained the situation with the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For those comments.
Remarks.
New business is the presentation from the E, I'm sorry, can anybody hear me? No.
No.
Okay. Okay. For new business, presentation from the EPA, okay? Now, and I think based on what Mr. Raja said, we do need audio in this area. And we are looking forward to having an opportunity in the upcoming year of dealing with the audio. Who is going to make the presentation here for EPA? Yes?
If it's not out of order, the councilperson who left is here, if she can come up and join in the presentation, because she will be, she will have to move forward. So I just want to hear it to a big conversation, so when she comes.
She can't do that. She can't do that.
She has to be sworn in.
No, she can't do that. I'm sorry. I didn't know.
Mr. King, if you don't know, ask. There's the law, no, you didn't ask. There's the law director right there.
Didn't I ask? I said, I asked if she could do it. And he asked you, no.
We have the mayor and the law director, and she said she has to be sworn in. Nobody is neglecting anybody up here, okay? Proceed with your presentation.
Okay, I'm Martha Orvis from the Ohio Environmental Protection Agency from the legal office. And we want to thank the city council for allowing us to make the presentation, for putting us on the agenda. And we want to thank the law director for the letter she sent, which we got on our way up here, agreeing that the city will negotiate with us, will discuss with us the municipal storm sewer system.
MS four.
MS four program. I can never remember the four's out. Anyway.
Your last name was again?
Horvitz, H-O-R-V-I-T-Z. I have three other people from Ohio who came with me, and the actual presentation, we're not going to do a PowerPoint. We're just going to work off the handout, and it'll be short, and then we'll be available to answer questions. And Dan Voweski will make the presentation.
Thank you, Martha. And can everybody hear me in the back?
Yes.
Okay, very good. I don't like to talk in my back to people, so I'm going to kind of shift back and forth, if that's okay.
You want to come over?
Is that okay? I can do that?
Yeah.
Can you spell your last name, Ken?
It's spelled B as in boy, O-G-O-E-V-S-K-I.
Thank you.
All right. I'm with Ohio EPA's Northeast District Office, and I'm the person who's responsible to ensure that communities are complying with these regulations here in Kioka County. I wanted to talk to you today about our municipal stormwater program. That's actually a federal program that came to be for smaller communities like East Cleveland back in two thousand and three. And when that program first was established, communities were given the opportunity to ask for a waiver, and the City of East Cleveland did that. Then in two thousand and eleven, Ohio EPA denied that request. Took some time to review all the data and to review those requests, but eventually it came back as a denial. So we have been trying to get the City of East Cleveland to obtain what's called a National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System Permit, or NPDS permit. And that's a permit that's required to discharge pollutants to waters of the state. And this particular NPDS permit is about discharges from what's known as your MS four, or Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System. A municipal separate storm sewer system is a conveyance or set of conveyances that collects rainfall when it falls from the sky, and then conveys it to our lakes, rivers, streams, et cetera. The City of East Cleveland actually is a community that your sewer system is partially, what we call combined, and partially separate. This permit program is really about the section that is a separate storm sewer, or really what's the blue lines on that map that you see there in the presentation. That's the one, yeah. Yeah, so as you can see, really only about a quarter or a third of the. Yeah, so as you can see, really only about a quarter or a third of the city is separate. It has municipal separate storm sewer systems. What the program requires the community to do is to develop and implement what's called a storm water management program, or a swamp plan. From the government, we have lots of acronyms, but swamp plan is what we use, what we use, yeah. That swamp plan basically lays out how the community is going to comply with these regulations and that NPDS permit. And it requires you to implement programs in six main areas. The first is public education. So you have to do things to educate the public and the businesses in your community about what they can do to reduce storm water pollution. The second program is of public involvement and participation. So getting the public involved with the development of a plan or implementing the plan is the goal of that particular control measure. The third control measure has to do with construction site runoff control. And construction site runoff control would apply to any new development or redevelopment where one or more acre of land is disturbed. Looking over Ohio EPA records over the last 10 to 12 years, in the City of East Cleveland, a new development or redevelopment of that magnitude appears to only occur once every two years. So it's not saying that happens very frequently, but when it does, we have to have rules in place to make sure that developers implement sediment erosion controls on construction sites to keep soil and other pollutants out of the storm sewer system. A related control measure is our post-construction runoff control measure. You have to establish rules and regulations about how to manage storm water after a property is developed or redeveloped in excess of an acre. That doesn't just get flood control, but it also gets that pollution control. So it's really about permanent structures that have to be installed to collect, treat, and release the storm water. The third control measure, I skipped over that, actually, I did four and five. The third control measure is actually the illicit discharge program. You have to have a program in place to, first off, map your storm sewer system, which apparently you mostly have already completed, and then go to the points where that storm system discharges to the rivers or the lakes, and look for signs of pollution from those sewers. Signs such as the smell of sewage, or other trash debris, et cetera, you need to find basically what the source of that is, and then take actions to eliminate it. The illicit discharge programs, the construction site programs, and the post-construction program actually require the council to pass ordinances so that you have these rules at the local level as requirements. Modeled ordinance is actually available through the Ohio EPA website, or local agencies such as NOAACA, the Northeast Ohio Area White Pointing Agency, or the Chippewa River Waters Partners. The final control measure has to do with pollution prevention or with housekeeping for your own municipal operations. For example, your service garage. You know, typically at every service garage, you've got things like vehicle maintenance, you've got spills of oil or fuel. You probably have a salt storage dome, so you've got, you know, salt that can wash in the storm sewer if it's not properly stored or handled. So that program is really about ensuring that you implement the practices at those facilities, and that you establish a program to maintain your municipal separate storm sewer system. So that's a brief overview of what the program requires. As indicated initially, this program's been around for a while, so all the communities around you are all regulated as well, and they have been implementing an MS4 or a swamp plan for a number of years now. So there's a lot of guidance that's been developed by other communities around you. At this point, you don't really have to reinvent the wheel, you just have to kind of pick from the best and kind of determine what's feasible and realistic for you as a community and to implement that program. In terms of getting a permit, your options would be to obtain your own permit, to partner up with a adjacent community as a co-permitee. So one, so what we're looking for from the city is to develop that swamp plan and then submit what's called either a notice of intent or a co-permittee notice of intent. That's the names of the application that you submit to obtain a permit. Once you obtain that permit, you have to call for a full phase-in of your swamp plan within five years. You have, you know, five years to really get going to get things fully in place. So there's, there's a break-in or transition period, that's forty-two. To kind of help you with implementation of that program, there are lots of county-level agencies that are already helping other communities that could also help you, and there are probably agencies that you already have agreements with to some degree to provide services for you in one way or another. One would be the Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District. As many of you know, they implemented a storm water program themselves. Yep. And as part of that program, it was, you know, the Supreme Court ruled, it's going, it's back in play essentially. They are ramping back up to restart it. But once it's restarted, those storm water utility fees will begin again. And that program is written in such a way that 25% of the money they collect from your community can be rebated back to you with the approval of the sewer district, which you want to spend it on, but it can be rebated back to you to implement these programs. So there's a source of money out there that will be available to you to do, to do some of this stuff. They're also very good at helping you with doing the illicit discharge program. They can help you verify if the math is correct. They can help you identify sources of illicit discharge, and can trace back to that source so that you know who you have to contact to notify that they fix that problem. Another agency that can help you out is the County Board of Health. They're also, they're also helpful with the illicit discharge program, but they also do things like public education, and they also help with the municipal program by providing employee training for your staff at the service garage and how to live storm water practices. The same with the Cuyahoga County Department of Public Works. They're also helpful in doing the storm sewer mapping or tracing sources of illicit discharge. I know they help out a number of different communities in that regard. And the Cuyahoga Soil and Water Conservation District is another organization that can help you out. The Cuyahoga Soil and Water Conservation District, they, in many communities, will review those plans that are required in the construction and post-construction measures. They go out and do site inspections, and then they also go out and inspect...